Good evening, everyone.
Don't do anything. Do it.
The April 23 meeting of your Aiken City Council. Tonight, we're going to start with an invocation and pledge. I'm going to ask Chief Branco if he will... Actually, I'm going to ask, I'm sorry, Lex Kirkland to come up and do our invocation, followed by Chief Branco for the pledge. Lex, good evening.
Please bow with me. Dear Lord, Almighty God, we gather here tonight for a city council meeting to tend to the business of the city of Aiken. Lord, we make plans and we prepare budgets with the best of intentions, but we know, Lord, that your plan is better than our plan. Lord, we ask that you guide us in our deliberations and discussions and that your will will be done and that you'll be glorified in the decisions that are made. And, Lord, when our plan and your plan don't align, Lord, we pray that you get your way. We thank you, Lord, for how you've blessed this city, the best city in the South, and we pray, Lord, that we're good stewards of this city. It's in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Lex. Good evening, Chief.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I want to thank everyone for coming out to the city council meeting tonight. We'd like to start as we always do, reading our guidelines for our conduct. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, discipline, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearing, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair, and if you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. And with that, I would like to recognize our mayor pro tem, Ms. Gail Diggs, for additions and deletions to the agenda. Councilwoman Diggs?
Good evening. We have one addition and one deletion to our agenda. We'd like to add under Presentations, number three, a request to dye the fountain on Newberry Street purple to promote the Lupus Walk on May the 5th. And we'd like to continue old business, number three, entitle and ordinance establishing new changes for water and sewer service.
Thank you.
Are there any more additions or deletions?
Yes, Councilwoman Diggs, I would like to continue and actually refer new business, item number two, the first reading of an ordinance to approve a concept plan for town home units on Town Creek. I'd like to refer that to Planning Commission. It's a different concept than what they had seen. It's been revised enough. I feel like it merits another look from Planning. So I'd like to also continue or refer number two, new business, to the Planning Commission. And I would like to just, before you make your motion, if we can move the lupus with the fountain in the declaration to maybe one B, that way it would be before the presentation from the school. So we'd have one A being the proclamation for better hearing and speech and one B being lupus, if we could.
That's good. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor of the agenda as amended? And that's unanimous. Thank you. The minutes were distributed to council members for their review before the meeting. Is there a motion for consideration, acceptance of the consideration of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of April 9, 2018?
Over.
Thank you, Councilman Walts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Jaredon. All those in favor of the minutes as presented? And that's unanimous. Thank you. We move down to Presentations. Number one under Presentations is a proclamation designing May 2018 as Better Hearing and Speech Month. I'd like to read that proclamation at this time. Whereas Sertoma was founded in 1912 in Kansas City, Missouri, and is the leader in the fight against hearing, speech, and language disorders that can constitute our nation's number-one handicapping disability affecting many people in Aiken alone and 38 million Americans nationally. And whereas most people with communicative problems can be helped medically, surgically, through personal hearing devices, technological innovations such as induction looping or speech and language rehabilitation, but first they must know that such help is available. And whereas Better Hearing and Speech Month is an intensive annual effort sponsored by Sertoma and other national hearing, speech, and language organizations, informing people about communicative disorders, encouraging those who suspect a problem to seek assistance, and publicizing the availability of service resources. And whereas this campaign should help to encourage and stimulate early detection, proper treatment, prevention, and greater understanding of hearing, speech, and language impairments, now therefore I, Rick N. Osmond, Mayor of the city of Aiken and city council hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Better Hearing and Speech Month in Aiken, South Carolina, and urge all citizens of Aiken to learn more about hearing, speech, and language handicaps and to encourage a more enlightened public attitude about this, our nation's most widespread malady. And it will be presented April 23, 2018. And I'll present this as a motion. A motion to accept?
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor? And of course, that's unanimous. And I do think we have a very qualified representative from Sertoma here, a past international...
President.
President, absolutely. Don, if you'd like to come up, we appreciate you being with us tonight, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm the immediate past president of Sertoma International, and I have fallen into the steps as president of Hearing Charities of America, which is a big step in moving our mission forward. I want to thank Mayor Osmond and the council for your support for Better Hearing and Health Month and Hearing Health Month in May in our city. Thirty-eight million Americans have significant hearing loss and over 12% of our population. The deaf earn 50% to 70% less than their peers on average. Hearing loss is the number-one health issue in men and number-four issue in women over the age of 65. We would recommend that all people over the age of 60 have hearing testing as part of their annual wellness examination. Hearing is irreversible, hearing loss is irreversible. We recommend safe ears, earplugs of any type, hearing protection for firing ranges, NASCAR, football games, and what have you. Almost 20% of our high school students today show the beginnings of hearing loss, again, an irreversible condition. The Sertoma Clubs in Aiken provide over 85 hearing systems available to the classrooms in our schools in Aiken. All teachers have to do is ask for them, and they're available. If we don't have one, we do have them, but we will buy one. No child can be in a classroom and not hear. We have also done inductive looping, which is for people with T coils in their hearing aids. We just finished the Etheridge Center, and we did the community playhouse a number of years ago, and they have been very rewarding for people that cannot hear, that they can go to those venues and hear. The Sertoma Clubs in Aiken send more than 40 children with hearing issues to camp at Camp Sertoma, which is a part of the outdoor lab at Clemson, and this is a life-changing camp for a lot of these kids. Remember, if you cannot hear, in many cases, you cannot speak. I just want to make one quick comment about, we have embarked in the last year and two months on a national hearing aid project to provide hearing aids to people that can't afford them. We can put a hearing aid on a person for about $500. As you know, if you have anyone or you have hearing aids, they can cost many thousands of dollars, but we can do this through the help of National Hearing Aid for people that... providers in schools and a private audiologist. But again, I want to thank you all for this, for recognizing this awareness because, as I said, hearing loss is irreversible. Thank you again, council.
Don, I'll present you with our proclamation at this time. Again. The past president, Barbara May, we appreciate all of you, and the local clubs do, and it was quite an honor to have a local gentleman as a national president, too. So congratulations on that, and job well served.
It was my honor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Moving down to one B, this is a proclamation recognizing lupus, is it week, month?
I'm going to let, you have the proclamation, so I'm going to recognize our mayor pro tem for this.
Well, first of all, as I said, we received a request from Jade Neelas, who is the founder of Crowning Lupus, for permission to dye the Newberry Street Fountain purple to promote the Lupus Walk, which is scheduled for Saturday, May 5, at Virginia Acres Walking Park, walking track, and that's, of course, at Odell Week Center. She's requesting to dye the fountain from April 25 to May the 5, the day of the walk. So I would like to read this proclamation and present it to our founder. I am a lupus survivor. I was diagnosed in 1998 and a very active member of Crowning Lupus. Whereas lupus is an inflammatory disease that can cause severe damage to various parts of the body, skin, joints, and/or organs inside the body by the autoimmune system producing antibodies to cells within the body, leading to widespread inflammation and tissue damage and belief that something is wrong. This is the part of the body that fights off viruses, bacteria, and germs. And whereas, it is estimated that as many as 1.5 million people in the United States are living with lupus. Ninety percent of people diagnosed with the disease are women in childbearing years, and as many as 1 in 250 people may develop lupus. And whereas, the city of Aiken calls attention to the need for people locally across South Carolina and around the world to unite in support of individuals, families, friends, and communities affected by this disease financially, physically, socially, and emotionally, and to renew our commitment to finding a cure and improving their well-being and quality of life. And whereas, Lupus Awareness Month encourages all citizens to learn more about lupus and the four different types: systemic, SLE; discord, which is skin-only; drug-induced lupus, temporary; and neonatal lupus, which occurs at birth where the infant eventually grows out of it, and to work together to raise awareness of this silent epidemic and treatment of lupus among residents of our city, state, and around the world. Now therefore I, Rick N. Osmond, Mayor of the city of Aiken, South Carolina, and this entire city council, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month and Saturday, May 5, 2008, as the fifth annual Aiken Lupus Walk in the city of Aiken, and urge our citizens to recognize and participate in these services. Presented April 23, 2018, signed by our mayor and this entire council.
Okay, is there a motion to move? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. So Jade, we're going to ask, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Diggs, and I know you have some board members and some people with you, your mothers with you also. If y'all guys would like to meet us at the podium, we'd love to present this for you.
Yes. Matter of fact, her mother, Elaine Neelas, is, and Veronica Bryant, or Ronika Bryant, is two of our most active members. We have, we give away scholarships to high school students. We started last year at four of the high schools in Aiken County, and we have so many fundraisers and back-to-school programs, and they would come to Flyburn Center and do a Halloween party for our pediatric patients. So we do a lot, but I'd like for Jade, Jade, to say a little bit because she is a survivor, but she is presently undergoing treatment, and she has good days and bad days. The last few days have really been good.
So like she said, I'm a survivor. I'm actually a 15-year survivor, and also I'm undergoing treatment. There's over 300 survivors in this county that are battling with this silent epidemic. It is so silent that a lot of survivors, they're embarrassed, and so you only see a few, maybe out of this room, if there were lupus survivors here, probably only three would actually get up and acknowledge that they have the disease. Our program was established because we don't have a national foundation here in the state of South Carolina. So our organization, based out of Aiken, not only do we help the survivors of Aiken County, but we help survivors all across the state. We have our scholarship program, like she mentioned. We also have a warrior program where we know that most survivors, their income goes to medication, and it goes to treatments and funding and other expenses such as hotel stays at MUSC in Charleston for their treatment. So we have a program where we pay for that for them. We also have a program where it's called the Crowning Wishes. It's similar to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, where we grant a survivor and their family on a trip. Last year, we were able to send a family to Disney World who are fighting this disease. So it's definitely a disease that's near and dear to my heart and that we continue to raise awareness and make a voice about it. We just truly appreciate all of the years that the city council and the city of Aiken have supported our organization and what we do to the community. So thank you all.
And Jade just received the proclamation from the governor declaring the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And we invite all of you to the walk on May the 5.
What does the walk start?
It starts at, the festivities start at 8:30, and then the walk starts at 9:30.
You're good.
Not too late to register.
You have to see everybody to walk.
Rick walks with us every year, and so does Lacy. So we invite you to walk with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Dr. Sean Alford, our superintendent of Aiken County School District. Dr. Alford, welcome tonight. We appreciate you being with us.
Good evening. It's a pleasure. Thank you very much for allowing me to come back. I was wondering if you were going to keep the stopwatch up there for me. I've only got a few slides.
Now, you have some of your school board with you tonight also.
I do, yes, sir, I do, and I certainly don't want to get too far without recognizing Mr. Tab Barbara, our vice chair, Mr. Ahmed Samaha, and also Mr. Cecil Ashley, who are here tonight to support us. I am quite fine. I'm here tonight to thank you for your collective and your individual support. We are now seven days and about 11 hours and maybe 40 minutes away from the polls opening on May 1. We are, this is an exciting time in our community. We have an opportunity to move forward, and I'm talking about the comprehensive community all of Aiken County. We're on the verge of this economic acceleration, wonderful opportunities here at the plant, but also toward the river. As a school district, we want to move forward and make sure that we are preparing not only our school facilities, but also our students, a future workforce, all those things that a thriving economy will need to take place so that we, as a community... Thank you so much, sir. As a community, we can benefit from those things. You know, when you're projecting or there's conjecture involved in planning, sometimes you can make mistakes. But there's a pretty good sign, when people start to invest money, that something's coming behind it, particularly as it relates to affordable housing. If the United States military invests over 2/3 of their construction budget in one site, I think it's comfortable to say something's about to happen. And we're really excited, again, about over 13,000 individuals that will relocate to this region just with Fort Gordon alone, just with the fort alone. And that's not to mention what's going to happen at MTU, Bridgestone, ASCO, the site. Right now, we have just wonderful opportunity in our community. Even looking at your agenda tonight, there's growth in Aiken as well. The trajectory may not be as steep as it is at the river, but there's growth here as well. And I appreciate the fact that our school board, back in January, made what I believe is a very prudent decision to ask the community and bring it before the community in the form of a referendum to help us prepare for that growth. There's six projects in all, four renovations, and the addition of two new buildings. The four renovations, most of those projects will take place in what we're calling the hot zone, exit 1, 5, and 11 of Interstate 20. We know the growth is there. We've seen it on Bettis Academy Road. We've seen it in North Augusta. We know individuals are there. Even this school year, Marcy Creek Elementary's picked up 30 kids since the start of school. And I'm not talking about kids who've come and left. I'm talking about a net gain, a net gain of 30. Lavelle McCambles picked up a net gain of 30 kids just this school year. That's an entire class of kids who've joined our school district just in those areas. We know that growth is taking place. These six projects, we believe, will help to address that growth. But particularly here in Aiken, there's an issue of growth, again, not as steep, but then there's an also added issue of safety. Millbrook Elementary is one that has just a very limited design. Built in 1954, the designers of that building probably never had to think about the possibility of someone causing danger or causing harm to the young children at school. So when it was designed, there was no problem with having 20 exterior doors that actually caused students to have to travel outside the classroom just to go to the main office. We're not faulting anyone. Things change over time, but we know right now in 2018, this is not the safest environment that we can have for our students, and we want to make sure that we can put more than just a five-foot fence between Pine Log Road and 20 of our exterior classroom doors. We ask our teachers to provide a 21st-century technology-infused education for our students. It's very hard to do that when there's only two outlets in the classroom, two. So we're asking our community, please give us an opportunity to come back and make these adjustments, these heavy renovations and expansions. Millbrook Elementary, Hammond Hill Elementary, Belvedere Elementary, an expansion at Midland Valley High School, but then also a new elementary school right on the juncture of exit 5 and Interstate 520. New elementary, new high school, I mean, I'm sorry, new middle school, new elementary school. You all will be pleasantly surprised to know that this is my last slide for tonight.
Joy and sweet.
People have asked, can you use the money you have right now? And we have been very transparent, maybe even sometimes to a fault. Yes, we can. We can use the money we have that we currently use for repairs and for building. The funds we have have been obligated through 2024 to partner with the One Cents Sales Initiative. So yes, we can use the funds we have, but if that's the case, we can't begin the first of six projects until 2024, and we'll finish the last of those six projects in 2037. Well, I don't know about you, I plan on being in this community for a long time. The odds are, I probably won't be serving in this role in 2037. I can guarantee you that a kindergarten student who's sitting in class today won't be in those schools in 2037. If the public gives us an opportunity to move forward on May 1, all six projects will be done in 2022 before Aiken High School is finished. We're excited, again, about what's ahead of us as a community. This is the third time you all have allowed me to come and see you. Third time's a charm. I certainly appreciate that, again, your collective support and your individual support. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to compliment you for the work you've done with the penny sales tax. I can remember driving by Aiken High and understanding why people would take one look, unfortunately judging a book by its cover, which we know is not right, and decide to go elsewhere. But quite frankly, I'm jealous of your ability to raise so much money. We have $230 million in infrastructure projects that affect the residents of the city of Aiken.
Yes, sir.
We're frequently dealing with water leaks and sewer problems and stormwater problems. My concern has always been, as it was with the hospitality tax, interfering with the passage of Capital Project Sales Tax 4 in November.
Yes, sir.
I hope you'll support that because that is so critical for the municipalities. We can only do it, I think, $39 million of our CPST 4 allocation is for infrastructure, and we've probably got another $20 million that we're actively doing. That leaves well over $100 million that we just can't fund.
Yes, sir.
As readily, as readily as you can, so that's my only dismay. I wish you'd have put it on the ballot in November or waited a year, but I certainly hope you'll lend your strong support to the passage of our tax proposal in November because that's very, very critical. And you've identified about $400 million that you're putting into the schools, which is needed, no question about it, absolutely needed. All these projects are wonderful. It's just that I'm concerned about how much the taxpayer is willing to give us, and we all get our money from the taxpayer, so thank you.
Dr. Alford, I know you didn't bring this as part of your presentation, but the bond issue that was in Aiken, before Aiken County, several years ago, one thing I was struck by was a significant difference in how this has been honed down and focused and as compared to, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the number of it, but...
2010.
Right.
The unsuccessful bond request was for 29 mils, 29 mils, which was the equivalent of $116 per year for the owner-occupant at a 4% assessment rate. That was 2010. Double-digit unemployment, the whole nine yards. In 2018, the request is five mils, five mils, which is the equivalent of $20 a year. So I want to make sure I clarify that. Some folks have been confused in that regard. We're not talking about $20 a month, $20 a year for that same... We're not talking about $20 a month, $20 a year for that same individual who owns their home at that 4% assessment rate. So if you divide that then by 12, that's $1.66 a month. It certainly is. So we have made very strong efforts to make this request both plausible and palatable, plausible and palatable, understanding all the needs we have as a community. But you know, I grew up in Mr. Dwar in a neighborhood where if the leaves were in your yard, my father and I would go over there and help you rake your leaves because that really is an overt sign of the entire community. Now, you may have chosen to come and help us rake our leaves or not. It didn't matter because we cared about our community, so we're going to come and help you rake your leaves.
Aiken is full of people who care for the community.
So we're going to help each other, absolutely.
Dr. Alford, I have a question, but I have a comment, and this is to you and your school board. First of all, I want to, these are two comments. I want to thank you and the school board for putting our children first and the safety and education of our children as the number-one top priority that you all address every meeting. And secondly, I want to thank you and your school board for being transparent in how you've handled this, how you've managed this. It's very obvious what you need. You didn't come and give us three or four portions of food, but you told us from the very beginning what is needed, and you could have split it up very easy, but thank you for doing this and for making Aiken County to remain competitive with education. It's so competitive now, so thank you so much.
We appreciate the opportunity to share. Mr. Mayor, if there's anything we can ever do, please let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Alford.
Thank you, Dr. Alford.
And to our school board members who are here, thank you for being here tonight.
Just as an aside, it's been my honor to be on the advisory board for District 1 before I came on City Council for a couple of years, and I've been able to get to know Dr. Alford, school board members, the administration. I have full confidence in them, but from a standpoint of a real estate professional, as an agent, as an appraiser, you go no further than Lexington County, go no further than Columbia County in Georgia, and see what they've done and the money that they've spent on upgrading the facilities, and it has helped the real estate in those communities. In Aiken County, we can see where the new school was built on Bettis Academy Road below I-20 and how that area has just taken off like crazy. And Dr. Alford referred to Exits 1, 5, and 11. I look forward to the day when we're talking about Exits 18 and 22 as well. So I support this. If you ask me if I'd give $50 of my money a year to get better schools, better facilities, I would gladly give that, so I support the referendum.
Thank you. Councilman Jared O.
I expressed my opinion in the Aiken Standard a few days ago, so I definitely support you.
I read everything you said.
Moving down to old business, number one. This is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Comments from staff?
Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have two appointments for council consideration. Councilwoman Price has recommended the reappointment of Jermaine Williams to the Building Code Appeals Committee for a term that would expire May 12, 2020, and Councilman Jared O. has recommended the reappointment of Mary Beth Fields to the Senior Commission for a term that would expire March 14, 2020. And those are all the appointments we have for council consideration tonight.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to accept these recommendations? We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous, thank you. Okay, are there any names to be considered at our next meeting for commissions or boards or committees?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mrs. Joan LaCombe for the Arts Commission.
Very good, our poet laureate. And I would like to reappoint Jason Raven to the Planning Commission for consideration at our next meeting. Any others? All right, great, moving on. Number 200 old business, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex the portion of US 1 from the city limits at Aldrich Street Northeast that crawls in Park to Duke Drive and the city of Aiken property known as the Northside Park. By title, an ordinance to annex to the corporate limits of the city of Aiken, certain property known as a portion of Columbia Highway North, US Highway 1, and property owned by the city of Aiken and known as the Northside Park. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We have for second reading tonight, annexation of said property, and it would be annexing the portion of Highway 1 to the Northside Park. The approximately 118 acres of the property known as the Northside Park would be zoned in single-family, excuse me, residential, single-family RS 15, and this will allow us to bring into the city this park, which will open in the summer. The council heard this at first reading, January 8th, sent it to the Planning Commission for their review, and the council, excuse me, the Planning Commission recommended unanimously at their February 14th meeting to recommend the annexation and zoning of this property. At council's request, we did two mailings in March to all adjacent property owners. They were sent a letter explaining the annexation, and we also sent a map to all adjacent property owners of what we were looking to do, as well as our water and sewer annexation policy pamphlet. And we have for council, and we have received some feedback from some of the property owners, just more general questions. But we have for council consideration tonight, second reading of this ordinance to annex a portion of US 1 Columbia Highway North to the property known as, currently known as the Northside Park and zone the park RS 15.
Thank you, Stuart. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that we point out, one of the main reasons for doing this is so we can provide adequate police protection out there and have the city public safety patrol this area. Without this, we couldn't really do that. So I think it's important citizens understand why we're doing this.
Any other comments? All those in favor on second reading? That's unanimous. Very good. Number three was actually pulled or continued, so moving down to new business. Item number one, this is a first reading of an ordinance to update the city of Aiken floodplain ordinance. By title, an ordinance amending the city of Aiken flood damage prevention ordinance. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Comments from staff?
Mayor, thank you. In order to comply with federal and state mandates, we have to, from time to time, amend our flood damage prevention ordinance. We've been working with FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, on this. In order to remain in compliance, we have to adopt an ordinance that recognizes FEMA's results from their most recent flood insurance study, and in order for residents that have to acquire flood, be given the option to acquire floodplain insurance or have to acquire it, we have to have this approved, and our staff at Engineering Utilities have reviewed this ordinance and recommend adoption for first reading. Also, the city attorney has worked with us as well.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Beanball. Comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Just a couple of questions. Does this change any, the approval of this, does it change any of our existing ordinances, other ordinances within the city?
Yes, it would amend the existing flood damage prevention ordinance that we approved about in 2012. A lot of them are just citation updates, but it is, there are some of those amendments. We have the maps as well that we can provide, but I don't know if the floodplain maps, and I know, I think Mike is here, he's, he worked with staff and FEMA on this, but with the floodplain maps, a lot of that pretty much stayed standard with some minor adjustments, I believe.
Six years, we're supposed to update to stay in compliance. The original ordinance was basically a model ordinance from FEMA. Some of the changes were just to change names and dates and some area heights for being above the floodplain, and that's just stuff that was passed down after FEMA met and floodplain met to say that, you know, to keep things out of the flood areas, you know, it needs to be raised up. So we had to adopt and change the ordinance just for those changes. Is there any property that has been added to the floodplain?
The maps will be updated at the end of 18. They're updated every six years, so we'll get new maps probably February or so of 19. That'll help us then with planning and development.
In my experience, it's sometimes people find out that they're in a floodplain when they, when they go to get a mortgage or they go to borrow money to improve their house, and all of a sudden, they're told they have to have flood insurance.
Well, that could happen. I'm not saying it won't, but this ordinance will help us then as a city to be able to be in compliance, and then if the resident does or the business owner does need to get insurance, the city's in compliance, and then they would be able to, you know, obtain...
Somebody wants to know if their house is in a floodplain? You could tell them?
Yes, yes. We can do it off 2012 maps right now. February, about February, March 2019, we'll get the revised maps.
Okay, thank you.
And if I'm not mistaken, if the city is not in compliance, residents can lose their flood insurance coverage.
Residents could lose their insurance, yes, or not be able to renew it. That's correct.
Very good, thank you, Mike. Any other questions from council? All those in favor on first reading? And that's unanimous, thank you. Number two under new business was referred to planning, so we'll move down to number three. Number three, this is a first reading of an ordinance to rezone property at 1012 Lawrence Street Northwest from single-family residential RS 10 to general business GB. By title, an ordinance to rezone certain property located at 1012 Lawrence Street Northwest from residential, single-family RS 10 to general business GB. There we go. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jared O. Second by Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. WG Development and the executor of the estate of Druceillwood, Sherry Matthews, have requested rezoning 4.9 acres of property located at the location of Rutland Drive and Highway 19. This is a project that came to our Planning Commission on April 10th, 2018, and the request was to rezone it from RS 10 to general business. This is a property on our north side that is a wonderful potential opportunity for putting some development in, and the Planning Commission did review this and approved it unanimously with one abstention and one member absent. So we have for council consideration tonight, first reading to rezone 4.9 acres at 1012 Lawrence Street from RS 10 to general business.
Thank you, Mr. Beanball. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? Okay, all those in favor on first reading of this? And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to item number 400 new business, this is a first reading of an ordinance to rezone property located at 201 Lindsay Drive from single-family residential RS 6 to office. By title, an ordinance amending the zoning of real estate located at 201 Lindsay Drive Northwest from residential, single-family RS 6 to office institutional. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Price, motion, I'm sorry. Councilman Walts made a second. Comments from staff?
Mayor, thank you. There is vacant property located on Lindsay Drive, and the owners have requested rezoning from RS 6 to office, and after the Planning Commission reviewed this, they recommended unanimously with one member absent to rezone, the rezoning request. They did make one recommendation with the condition that the egress and ingress be limited to Hudson Road only, and for council consideration, we have first reading of this rezoning request of 201 Lindsay Drive from RS 6 to office.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? Comments, council? All those in favor of the first reading of the ordinance to rezone the property at 201 Lindsay Drive? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business, this is number five. This is a first reading of an ordinance to rezone property at 616 Park Avenue Southeast to general business. By title, an ordinance to rezone certain property located at 616 Park Avenue Southeast from residential, single-family RS 6 to general business GB. Is there a motion?
I so hope.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diggs, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jared O. Comments from staff?
Mayor, thank you. The applicant, Jane Paige Thompson, and new property owner Katie Lipscomb have requested the rezoning of 616 Park Avenue Southwest from RS 6 to general business. This is the only parcel currently on that block that is not zoned general business. The Planning Commission did review this at their meeting two weeks ago and unanimously recommended with one abstention and one member absent that the rezoning request to general business be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Beanball. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council? All those in favor of first reading of the ordinance to rezone the property at 616 Park Avenue Southeast? And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to number six under new business, this is a first reading of an ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed to Hollow Creek for property deeded to the city of Aiken for an equine or walking trail. By title and ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real property to Hollow Creek Preserve LLC. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Gregory and Councilman Dwar, second, thank you. Comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. In February 2007, the city accepted a deed of dedication from Hollow Creek Preserve LLC with the intention of, for several parcels, with the intention of potentially building an equestrian and walking trail, essentially running from where the village at Woodside is towards Anderson Pond Road. After a bit of review and work with Army Corps of Engineers, it was, I think, and also as in talking with members of the, from Woodside, as well as from the equine community, it was felt that this would not be, between the factors of cost and use, it was felt that it would not be in the city's interest to construct this, and we had met with Woodside Properties representatives approximately a month ago to discuss, they requested the meeting and asked that the city consider deeding it back to them, and that is what we have before council tonight for first reading, is to transfer this property back to Hollow Creek Preserve LLC.
Thank you, Stuart. Comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
Do they have to take it?
They have to take it.
They have to take it?
They said they would.
Yes, they are the ones that approached us.
They want to take it.
Yes, they want to take it back, and they would like to construct... Yes, they want to take it back, and they, they would like to construct potentially more of a pedestrian or walking trail.
Yeah, that project changed over the years.
Yes.
Take the tractor and cut the gas. One down for us.
Down, down, no.
Be a long ride.
All right, all those in favor of first reading of the ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed to Hollow Creek? And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving now to that section of our agenda, petitions and requests. Item one, this is accommodations tax committee recommendations for funding request. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Duarte, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gregory, comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, the accommodations tax committee meets to consider funding requests for the following fiscal year. And they have, they met in February after accepting applications for marketing funds under the accommodations tax guidelines and recommended two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of funding to the projects listed in our agenda. The projects combined asked for a little over three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars worth of funding. And we have our staff liaison Rebecca Waddell and our accommodations tax committee chair, Peggy Penlon, here tonight if there are any questions based on these recommendations they are making to council for funding.
Very good. Any comments from the audience? Comments or questions from council?
I have a question. Peggy. Uh, the African-American Cultural Arts Center did not make a request this year?
Yes, we were surprised about that, but there was no request. I did speak to a lady who did inquire after the fact.
Uh-huh.
And Rebecca is taking into the possibility of, in the event there is extra funding, you know, if it's not too late to apply for that.
Okay. I think they had some changes in leadership as I sent the applications out.
They did, they did, so.
So they just did not need it. I don't, uh, Lesley is there? Not the director after Jill Add?
Yes, there is. There's an interim person, and I'll share that information with you later. So if they do come forth and if the state will allow it, we'd be happy to hear it. I do have one quick question. I saw my name on a piece of paper just now that Rick Osman is proposing me for another term. Is that correct?
Um, I, I haven't, I will though.
No, no, it's on the agenda. No, it's not? It says March twenty-fifth. Anyway, we'll talk about that later.
Yeah.
I've only been through four tourism supervisors.
You can read between those lines.
You should.
She don't want it, she don't want it, Rick.
It's been a pleasure, it really has.
I would just want to say, this is one of our few committees that is ripe for criticism because of the tough decisions that they have to make, and I want to thank all of the members of the committee for doing a great job.
This past meeting was actually smooth. We had only fourteen applications for the funding, and it went very smoothly. Thank you, Rebecca. She did a very good job for her first time up. So it went very smoothly, and I'm happy to serve, but let's talk about it, Rick.
Okay.
All right, any other comments from council?
Beyond-
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I've been dealing with an issue of burning in the, in the city. It's a piece of, in my case, it's a piece of property that's located in the county, but the burning affects my constituent in the city.
Well, we need to vote on the A-Tech.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said-
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any other comments? I apologize. Any other comments on the accommodations tax? Okay, and all those in favor? And Peggy, that, that vote is unanimous and certainly comes with a thank you to everyone on the, on the committee.
Burning the trash, burning the trash.
All right, under information, issues and updates, Councilman Duarte, the floor is yours.
Well, I'm, I'm dealing with this issue of someone who lives in the county burning and affecting a, a city residence, and when I went to Earth Day, which by the way was an outstanding, another outstanding effort on the part of the Environmental and Energy Committee, I spoke to somebody from DHEC who said, "You can't burn in the state, period." The only thing you can burn is things that come down, and you can't burn trash." And that was a shock to me, because I'd always heard that there were a lot of people in the county that were, in fact, burning trash. So I just think that's information that we need to get out to the public, along with the telephone number of where to report violators. Perhaps we can put that in the Aiken report, at least for our citizens, because it is a problem. And, and there's another, another member of, of council that was dealing with it as well, I just don't remember who.
And as I recall, on an email discussing that, we, we had a very positive from one of our county elected officials.
Yes, yes.
On that issue as well. All righty.
But yes, we will put that in the news, uh, Aiken-
That's right.
Okay, anything else for issues and update?
I don't have issues and update, I, I want to regress a bit, if you don't mind. Under appointments, I spoke with Sarah earlier today regarding an appointee, and I didn't want to appoint, recommend appointment for her until I heard from her affirmatively, and she texts me and said she's interested in serving on the Arts Commission, and I don't have her information, Sarah, yet, but she will have at the next meeting. But that is Dr. Valencia Johnson. She is, she is on the Cultural Arts Center, she's a professor at USC Aiken.
Very good. All right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Sounds like I have another appointment to add after Peggy's comments too, so. City council needs to go into executive session. Before I entertain a motion, let me say city council will go into executive session after regular meeting on April twenty-third, two thousand eighteen pursuant to section thirty dash four dash seventy A two to discuss negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements and proposed sale and purchase of property. Specifically, city council will discuss the proposed sale of real estate owned by the City of Aiken and the proposed purchase of real estate. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all those in favor? And that's-